This is the Town and Chatham Planning Board Working Session Meeting on December 9th, 2024 at 4:00 PM. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. I don't see anybody. President, pursuant to Governor Haley's March 29, 2023 Signing of the Acts of 2023, Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31st, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting, while in progress, may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 956-519-021, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, formerly Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of the meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. I'd like to begin with the roll call. Catherine Halpern.
Present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Werschafter.
Bob Werschafter, present.
Charlene Greenhall.
Charlene Greenhouse, present.
Frank Shear.
Present.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus here.
And Art Spruain, I'm present. Okay, this is a workshop session on the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, and mostly this is going to be a discussion with the Public Works Director on the infrastructure discussion. I would just like to let the board members know that we have a 5:00 meeting after this. The crew will need a little bit of time to shift over from the 4:00 to the 5:00, so we'd like to cut this off about 3:45. If...
Over hour?
4:45. I did that last week, too. 4:45. And if we get into discussion, that's fine. We can continue that toward the end of the 5:00 meeting. So I'd like to introduce, of course, you all probably know, Rob Farley, our DPW Director. He drafted the memo that was sent to us. He doesn't have any introductory comments, but the whole reason for him to be here is to answer questions. I counted eight or nine questions that the board has, the board members had last time that related to infrastructure, so it'll probably be worthwhile just to go through those again, just so that we can get on the record what kind of response we have on them and see which direction we want to go in. I'll begin with you, Catherine, if you...
I actually didn't get the memo.
You didn't?
No, I didn't.
Okay, then we'll start with Warren, and we'll get back to Catherine then.
Sorry about that.
Are there copies of the DPW memo?
I thought that this was...
DPW had provided an email at the last meeting. I did not know you were looking for copies of it, to be honest with you. I had put it into a memo from DPW, just in that format. I didn't realize that you were going...
So it was what was in the packets, the last meeting, your heading on there, notes from, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, I think I'll pass. I'll see if I can pull up the emails.
Okay.
I can go upstairs and get copies if you want me to.
That might be helpful.
Okay.
I can start out with a general question.
So it seems like we just didn't have your memo at hand, but how would you like to just
give us a brief summary of the main points that you've concluded? As you know, as I understand it, you looked at the build-out analysis that was done for us by the BSC Group, and they looked at two scenarios for us, 12 residential units per acre and eight residential units per acre. There was previously an infrastructure analysis done based on the build-out analysis done in 2014, but in the context of the Route 28 Visioning Study done by Cape Cod Commission, which presumed four residential units per acre, and I understand that was done by Dr. Bob Dunkinson. So just that that's sort of the baseline we're dealing with. Can you let us know what conclusions you've come to?
Sure. Again, thank you for having me. Rob Failey, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
So we did, we primarily looked at the eight ADU units. We didn't dive into the 12. We wanted to see if eight was going to push us over any thresholds, and if it wasn't, then we would have dived into the 12. So we did look at the eight ADU units. The sewer gravity, which is under, you know, Main Street in that section, shouldn't have a problem with capacity in that area regarding the pipe sizing. Barn Hill Road Pump Station, which is at the corner of Barn Hill and Harding's Beach Road, that is, we looked at eight, and then we knocked it down to five, just to give us a good kind of baseline. And we are, we'd really have to do a tighter analysis. We're really close. We may be able to accommodate that under current conditions, but it may limit us for future development in that area.
So when you say we're really close, we're really close to five, or really close...
I think it could accommodate both, but we'd have to crunch the numbers a little bit closer. I think we could accommodate eight, but then again, we have to look at what future potential build-out is for sewer flowing to the Barn Hill.
The neighboring areas, including the 40B that's proposed for the Buckley property, as well as the potential increased residential density that the board would like to consider for what we're calling a transition zone or buffer zone to the east of West Chatham Neighborhood Center. We'd like to consider also doing some rezoning that would allow for greater residential density there. So based on what I've just said, and what about, is there another pump station that comes into play?
There is. It's the George Ryder Road Pump Station. So really, if you look at, on Route 28, the medical building, everything from there and west goes up to George Ryder Road Pump Station. Everything east of there goes down to the, in that general area, goes down to the Barn Hill Pump Station. So the George Ryder Road Pump Station is a little bit more problematic. We would be exceeding, even at five, we would be exceeding its pumping capacity. But I don't want to, you know, this is not a detriment, you know, this is something where those pump stations are 12 years old, the design life is 20 years. We will have to, you know, a lot of times, those pumps stay in service much longer than that. It's just what their, you know, design life is. Full development, full build-out likely won't happen overnight.
No.
So there is an opportunity for when properties get developed, an additional, you know, wastewater is being pumped to these pump stations.
Thank you.
We can upgrade them at those times, but it's, I just wanted to lay it out for you that, you know, it would be a case where we would have to increase the size of the pumps in those pump stations. Doesn't mean we would have to renovate the size of those pump stations, it's just the pumping capability of those pumps that we have in there now.
Okay, so right now, so could you just repeat for me, what goes to the George Ryder Road Pump Station?
So from the medical building on Route 28?
West.
West.
So that's really most, that's a lot of it.
It's not all, you know, it's not when we get down to...
Chapahoy is not.
Like Sam Ryder Road, it's not that far, but we do, both of those pump stations, the George Ryder Road Pump Station and the Barn Hill Road Pump Station, both pump to the Huckleberry Pump Station, which is just outside of the WPCF.
Okay.
Those may impact that pump station as well as we add additional flow. It has capacity now, and a lot of the sewer we built in the West Chatham area hasn't been built out all the way yet, so there is capacity. But as properties get developed and additional flow is introduced, that's where we really have to start looking at what the, sorry, the capability of our pump stations are.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, yes, some upgrade is needed in the pump stations to accommodate even five units per acre or eight units per acre.
Yeah, not so much at Barn Hill immediately.
Right.
But more so at George Ryder Road.
Okay, great. I'm sure I'm going to have more questions, but I think, Mr. Chair, we could continue if Warren, Chain, or if you would like to...
Yes, you've already answered one of my questions, which was really, what was the design life of what's out there and, you know, what the normal process would be. Clearly, the pumps that are out there are halfway through their useful, their planned life, so in another 10 or 12, 15 years, you would be planning to replace them anyway.
That's correct.
And if they had to put in larger pumps, does that mean just changing the pump, or do you have to build a whole new pump station because it won't fit, for example?
No, it would pretty much be just the pump itself. I mean, we're still talking probably half a million dollars in today's dollars to replace a pump, a pump station, you know, the full blown-out station, especially George Ryder and Barn Hill, they're actually buildings that are there, they may be like in the order of $2 million if we were to replace those fully, but it's really just the pump that's in the wet well.
Okay. And again, you would be planning to have to replace the pump like-for-like, even if there were no increase in flow.
It would be on our radar, yes.
And the incremental cost of increasing the size of the pump is material, or...
You know, the pump itself may be in the $150,000 to $200,000 range, but then it has to be, you know, new electric, new SCADA programming, you know...
Oh, but I mean, a larger pump versus replacing the same size pump.
Right, it would be a larger pump, but incremental cost, you know.
Not a tremendous amount of difference.
Would there be, I think, forgive me for interrupting, but would there be an increase in cost because we're doing a larger pump rather than just replacing with the same size?
Yes, there would be.
There would be. Do you have a ballpark?
I would say probably in the $50,000 to $75,000 range.
Okay.
And in...
But none of that electric or SCADA stuff, you know, any of that equipment would be reusable, it would all have to be new.
Okay.
And could you clarify for me as whether or not in developing response to our questions, you were able to consider the impact of the 40B developments on, what is it, 137 or 134 and the Buckley properties? Because that's a whole lot of houses that are going to be much sooner probably than ever would come about as a result of our zoning changes.
We had looked at those previously, especially the 10137, just because the Meeting House Road Pump Station is a brand-new pump station, it's not even in service yet, but that has a lot of capacity, there's a lot of flow that would go to the Meeting House Road Pump Station. The addition of the Buckley property, I'm not sure if that one, I'm not sure if that one flows to Barn Hill or not, I don't have that on my map. I think it does, though. It's just west of, just east of Dunkin' Donuts, correct? Yeah, so that one would flow to Barn Hill. So yeah, so there is limited capacity for growth.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. I guess I was going to go back to the beginning with the design of the entire sewer system. Presumably, there was an assumption about capacity that would be required over some period of years, and that would have to have assumed some sort of a build-out from what was done when the initial planning and design of the whole system was done. And it did seem a little surprising to me that merely by adding a few hundred houses or living units, bedrooms are really the question that we were hoping to get a handle on. How many bedrooms are we talking about? Because that's really the way people tend to look at flow, I think, here in terms of the Health Department, that it would be such a large increase over what might have been planned when the initial design of the sewer system was put in place. Has something changed materially in terms of the way the whole system would have been designed?
No, I mean, the system was originally looked at capacity-wise back in 2009. Every time we develop a project, you know, we look at the numbers again, we look at any possible development. We're talking some larger numbers, not just, you know, a small subdivision that goes in. These are, you know, quite a few ADUs or households that are adding flow. Going back to your bedroom question, so we have an assumption of 150 gallons per day per dwelling, and that's based off of historical knowledge in Chatham. It seems like regardless of the number of bedrooms in a house, we have a pretty strong average of 150 gallons per day of wastewater flow per residence.
Well, that's interesting news.
It is interesting.
Also, could you just clarify for me in terms of the way you have looked at the capacity question that we've hit you with, as to whether there was any, I'll call it offset, in other words, reduced flow as a result of the rezoning of much of Route 28 to R20 from general business? Because you would expect there to be some lesser flow from those areas in a full build-out analysis than there might have been when the system was designed or than what we're talking about right now.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't looked at that to see if there's reduced flow from what our expectations are. We certainly can, you know, but it's just, it's a level of effort that we didn't pursue.
Yeah. I guess my takeaway, I guess, with respect to your answers to my concerns are that the flow is marginally adequate today, but in the future, probably the next 10 years, you're going to be looking to replace pumps anyway, and that the additional dwelling units that are likely to come about in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center as a result of our zoning change are not going to be anything close to the maximum build-out numbers of units in the next 10 years. And so it's not necessarily a big problem.
Well, I mean, there is additional expense. I mean, again, $500,000 in today's dollars to build a, basically rehab a pump station where, you know, possibly the cost of a new pump is $150,000 to $180,000. You know, we have to look at what the flow is and what our capabilities are, but, you know, what may be minor to you, I feel like it's, you know, this sewer system, as we develop all over town, you know, we're already $118 million into it. I'll be requesting another large amount at annual town meeting this year. Do we want to put that towards expanding functioning pump stations and adequately-sized pump stations? It's, I think there is a cost involved. I mean, the order of magnitude is, you know, for everybody to interpret their own way.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you. No other questions.
Oh, Bob.
So I'm trying to understand a little bit in terms of development fees and other things like that, if a property anywhere in town decided that they wanted to expand their facilities and there was inadequate sewage, would there be an appropriate application for a development fee to help pay for that as part of the project development? Is that something that gets done? I mean, we do curbs and we do other things that we require for a development. If it seemed appropriate that we needed to upgrade the sewers, it is something that we could include in our development requirements, isn't it?
That's out of my wheelhouse. It's nothing that DPW would enact.
Okay, fair enough.
I like where you're going with it, though.
Well, I just, it seems to me we're, I don't want to put this plan aside because right now we don't have a pump, one pump that's the right size for the entire area, when we don't even know where we would need the sewer expansion. We don't even know if it really does need a new pump yet, and if it does, that would trigger some costs, and somebody would either have to pay for that, or the town would pay for that, or the project has to wait a few years until the capacity is there. But I mean, it's not like we should stop doing this whole plan because right now there might be one sewer pump that isn't the right size, and it's not a permanent thing, it's going to be replaced in a few years. So I'm less discouraged by this letter than I was when I got it two weeks ago. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, your development fee that you referred to there, I think I asked this question of Katie, and she looks at this as an impact fee?
Yeah, that's an impact fee, a development fee.
And would that be something that we could consider? And I can't remember your complete answer on this one, I asked you this.
I don't know that we want to consider it. I want to know if it's something that, it's legal to do, it's something that could be done in a worst-case scenario, that if somebody wanted to develop right now and there wasn't adequate sewage, we could negotiate a develop impact fee that would cover some of that cost or most of that cost so that the project could go forward. I'm not saying we want to do that, I'm just saying it's legal to ask for an impact fee.
You could defer it if you...
Traditionally, impact fees have not been allowed in Massachusetts, is my understanding, the way I've always been told. We would have to look into that from a legal perspective because...
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
My entire career, I've been told that impact fees are not...
But we get around it by saying, why don't you just build that curb up and a few other things as part of a project? I mean, we do that all the time.
So there's, you know, onsite improvements and then, you know, potentially some offsite improvements that could be, like if something needed a special permit, but requiring a fee, an impact fee, I want to look into the legality of that, and I'm not sure if anybody has any, if Christine has any different experience or even Charlene, perhaps, I mean...
I'm actually drawing a blank, I can't remember if they were lawful or not in Massachusetts.
So we'll...
I know certain, like the Cape Cod Commission can impose certain improvements through their review if it triggers a development of regional impact, but I can't remember if the towns can do something like that.
Right. I'd like to look into it further. We haven't, I mean, it hasn't, I haven't been involved in any projects during my career that have seen it happen.
I think it's worthwhile looking into it, though, yeah.
Charlene?
Going back to fees a little bit, when a project is hooking into the sewer, there is a fee they need to pay to hook into sewer, just like if they're going onto town water. Is that correct?
Yes, and it's minimal, I think it's $100.
Wow, really?
We want people to hook up, you know...
Well, yes, and in some cases, I mean, they have to. So going back to your, the assumption you used of 150 gallons per day, is that based on, do you think that's based on because we have an older population here and we don't have as many children, so we don't have as many kids taking those, you know, hour-and-a-half-long showers, you know, that kind of thing? I know for 55 and over developments, they use a different calculation than they would for a regular development when it comes to, you know, Title V, because it's what, 110 gallons per bedroom, I believe, for regular, but like for 55 and over development, it drops to like 50 gallons, 50. So, you know, I'm just curious if that's the clincher, but, you know, I agree with Bob, I do feel better... I do feel better about, you know, you coming in today, because I think if there need to be improvements to any of the pump stations, I would think that there would need to be a further build-out analysis based on what's allowed under zoning and allowed by right or even by special permit as far as, you know, residential development and commercial development, because things do change. I mean, we changed the whole corridor of, of Route 28, not the whole, but a good chunk of it. So, you know, there, there may be some, some future analysis that would have to be made if and when the pump stations need to be improved. I mean, to me, that's just good planning if we are moving forward, and I don't mean planning as in, you know, our plan, I just total overall planning. But I do feel better in the conversation.
Yeah. Catherine has a clarifying question she has.
I just wanted to ask you, Charlene, are you talking about a town-wide analysis of the sewer system based on new development?
Not, not necessarily. I think it's going to be, for lack of a better term, zone-driven, and I don't mean zoning zones, I mean, the areas that contribute to the pump station that may need to be upgraded.
Well, I, I think you have a point there, because when I was listening to Rob's description of what gets impacted, if you think about it from, from the health, health center there to the west, that goes into one pump station. Well, that's a dominant part of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So, this would be more of a localized piece that would impact that pump station, right? If we did nothing to the east of it, then that's less of an impact. So, if we go east and we do, and we do adjustments in the number of units there, let's say not only in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, but the adjacent section, properties that we were considering multifamily, adjusting the, the number of units that could go in there. Now, that would impact like the next pump station over, so that's the Barn Hill Pump Station. So, I think as you go down, because, you know, fairly flat, everything is being pumped somehow, some way, so as, as we go into different sections, I think we're going to find that there's going to be challenges. If we do a high amount in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, we may not be able to do as much in the adjacent areas if we wanted to consider them as a follow-up in future, you know, rezonings. So, I, I think we just need to know where we're putting all of our cards. I mean, it's, this isn't, this shouldn't be just a housing project for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. I'd like to see this being a village center, commercial as well as residential, and then the adjacent areas would support that even further.
I couldn't agree more with what you're saying right now.
So, if we put too much here, then we do nothing here, and it's almost like not, not necessarily the best planning, is the way I'm thinking of it. And I don't know what that number is, but I'm just saying that I think I would like to do both, not just the West Chatham Neighborhood Center.
I, I agree too.
Okay. Frank?
Absolutely.
Frank, wouldn't you ask any questions you have?
The, the first sentence of, of the memo says that you've looked at the sewer infrastructure capacity for a maximum of eight units per acre derived from the build-out analysis. Did we use the full amount, 322 units in the building analysis, or did we use the net amount that would be less because we're taking the place of units that are already there? I forget the number, but it's more like 200 and something, yeah, 292.
Actually, when I read the BSC memo, if you take a look on page three...
Okay.
They do indicate that the number of 322 goes up to 337 if you're looking at 12 units per acre, and that would include the existing as well as the new development.
I just wanted to find out what number we were using for, for this.
I believe it was the 207, the new, the additional units on top of what was already there.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. Secondly, we had looked at, you know, a potential density, if a developer used the density bonus for putting in year-round and accessible housing at 12. And we, when we knew that, that a lot of developers would not use that density bonus, it would be a lot, a lot less. So, this is a very theoretical exercise. But the, you looked at eight instead of 12. Could, could you talk to that a bit? In other words, why, why did we drop, drop down to eight?
Well, you know, so running through the SewerCAD models with my consultant, it does cost money. We wanted to see if eight would push us over any threshold. We knew we didn't have a lot of capacity, additional capacity, from what our planned build-out was in those pump stations, so we had to add the additional units and the flows from, from those proposed eight ADUs, just to see what kind of threshold we would have. We could run it again with 12, but if we're already kind of toeing the line with eight, I think we're just, you know, we're just expanding.
So, are we toeing the line as we're currently set up, or would we be toeing the, the line after we potentially upgrade the pumping stations?
Well, no, we would, we would look at, so if, if those properties were rezoned, so when we redevelop and look at sewer expansion, we look at every single property, and we also look at some of the planned, you know, uses for those properties. It would be a case where if there were 12 ADUs proposed, when we redid the pump station, we would have to take that into consideration.
Sure. But I, I guess what I'm getting to is, if the time comes to upgrade the pumps, and at that time, the powers that be decide that we're going to upgrade them so we can handle 12, that's okay, right? The sewer system could handle that.
Well, yeah, it, it is what it is. There's, there's pipe capacity out there, it's the pump stations where it is the weak point.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. And going back to bedrooms, you're, it's a very interesting comment you, you made. It doesn't matter how many bedrooms, it all kind of averages out to 150.
That's when houses are occupied. I mean, you know, we could, we could be up over 3 million gallons per day in midsummer, but we're down around maybe 700,000 gallons in the winter, you know? So, it, it does fluctuate, but you have to kind of assume, you know, which houses are occupied, but it does average out regardless whether it's a two-bedroom or a five-bedroom. It seems like 150 gallons per day is a really, for Chatham, anyway, it doesn't, doesn't work everywhere, but for Chatham, it, it's a really solid number to go by.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Can, can we talk, it seems to me it's a peaking issue and not an average issue and that we're, we're dealing with here?
Yeah, it's, because the, the pumps are rated gallons per minute, so, but we do have to average it to some degree.
But it is, it is, our, our real concern is, do we have the capacity to pump if everybody's here in the summer? And, and not, not on average over the year, are we able to pump?
No, right, correct.
So, it is a peaking issue.
Correct.
We need to look at, and the models, are they, they designed to look at the maximum or are they designed to just do an average?
They look at, they look at the peak flows.
Okay. So, if, if I asked you over to take that model, and I don't want you to do it again, but I just, I think a, a more appropriate model might have been 250 in 15 years with, with 20 a year for the next, you know, 20 more each year going forward. At what point do we actually get into trouble? And is it, is it past the eight years where we would be replacing those pumps anyway? That's, I think that's a more appropriate way to look at this issue here, is that, okay, we're going to start putting more property, more capacity on this, this system here if we go ahead and pass this, and let's be optimistic and say each year we get 20 new units. When will, will we have a problem before we actually have to replace those pumps anyway in eight, 10 years, like you said? And I don't, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I think it's a lot closer to we're, we're going to be okay.
Yeah, I mean, you were getting, we're getting into the weeds quite a bit, you know?
Yes, but that is, yes, I...
But I understand your, what you're saying, yeah, and I, you know, yeah, a, a build-out doesn't happen overnight, and we still have people that were required to connect, and they were still waiting for some of them to connect. So, we're not even at our capacity of what it was designed for. So, may, there may be room for additional new development until we reach that critical flow point.
Charlene, yeah, I think that the point of it is, though, is if, if you want to add all of this on, and the infrastructure isn't upgraded, and a new applicant comes in and they say, oh, wait a minute, we don't have capacity here at this pump station, you're going to have to wait. That's treating these properties very differently, and I'm not quite sure. I want to get in the middle of that, I mentioned this before. I think that we should be cautious about that, and if there's a plan that this is going to happen, because it's 20 years out, fine. But if there's, if this is going to initiate some of that, and we still have another half of the system still to be built and to connect into it, you know, I'm a little wary about putting, putting too many eggs in this one location. We have many other locations that we're, want to add, and I don't want to sacrifice those because we want to put all our focus here. I don't think our focus should be just here. I think it should be in multiple, multiple areas of the town, especially when it comes to multifamily residential. But Charlene, you had a question?
Well, just...
And I want to get to Bob for, to be...
Just following up quickly on what you said, each area is going to be looked at by the pump station involved and the gravity system.
Right.
So, I don't think we're putting all our eggs in one basket here. The question I had just quickly is, the, the flow we're talking about, is that the actual sewer flow or is it based on the amount of water being used?
It's the actual sewer flow.
It is, okay.
And allows for a certain percentage of infiltration, you know, usually 3% to 6% is typical.
Bob, I want to get to you first before we get too far down.
Too far down, huh? That's why I like being over here. I don't know, you're concentrating on the pumps. How much, how much flow is there left in the pipe? One-third? We had one-third capacity right now, we had half-capacity in the flow in the pipe itself transferring to the plant.
In, in the gravity system, we're down a little less than 40%.
Okay. What about the pressure systems?
You know, they flow pretty much full, you know?
I know, but, but it's the rate they've...
Right, right. There is, there is capacity.
Slowly, you know, they don't, it's not like 90 pounds of, of pressure going through them and screaming through the pipes. So, you still have plenty of flow in the pipes.
Correct.
You know, then that's, that's something, not only replacing the pumps to pump into the pipes, is, is if you have to replace the diameter of the pump. I mean, I was just noticing on, in Yarmouth, they have three-foot diameter pipes going down 28. That's a big sewer pipe.
Yes.
So, so that's, that's one of the questions, is to, in the future expansions, to kind of look out for and say, well, we might have to upgrade the pipe instead of a six-inch or an eight-inch, we might have to put a 10-inch pipe in this section, contemplating that, that the flow could, could be more as, as the little villages keep cropping up. Unfortunately, we've gone to down Main Street to the CVS, the next phase, I believe at some point you're going to, are going to, well, we've gone down to Oyster Harbor, Oyster Pond, rather. The next phase through town, replacing the water and sewer mains down there, I would assume that the pipes are going to be much larger there. We're looking at Crow Road, which, which has a, a upgrade on it already, but it, it's, it's a small upgrade because we're, we're slowly expanding that into North Chatham a little bit, and then down Crow Road, except into Great Hill, I would assume, and into, you've also gone to Queen Anne Road, where the expansion to Queen Anne Road should, should tie into Samurai Road at some point later in life if I live so long. But, but, so, you know, those are the little things that now is the time to catch them before all of a sudden we go, gee, we've got to add another pipe down 28 or something like that, or figure a back road to go.
All right. I'd like to get to Catherine first and then back to Charlene.
So, I just had, I think what I'm hearing, somehow, we, we need to make it clear, though, if we, what I'm hearing from you is at current, under current conditions with the sewer system and the pumps, eight units per acre, even five units per acre is not workable. We do need to upgrade the pumps at George Ryder to accommodate even five units per acre. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, it's just, I don't know how we feel about putting forth a bylaw to the town contingent upon future improvements. We would just need to make that clear, that the density that we'd be proposing actually could not be handled currently, but it's contingent upon future improvements in the, in the wastewater system. So, from a planning perspective, I've, usually we want to say that the infrastructure is in place to handle the zoning that we're proposing. So, I, I just think that's something the board should consider. The other question, and please forgive my ignorance on this point, but one thing, one principle that comes up a lot in the comprehensive plan is that we are inhabitants of a fragile, on a fragile coastal ecosystem. I'm not sure how much the sewage system impacts that. Is there a situation where too much increase will negatively impact the ecosystem overall? Or is that it doesn't impact it?
I mean, the way it's, the way it's treated and the way the effluent is handled...
It doesn't.
It's, it's a, it's a bonus to the environment, you know?
Okay, great.
Any, any development or any, any new hookups to our wastewater plant is, is a benefit to the environment.
Okay, great. That was my question.
Okay, Charlene?
Just very quickly, and this is more...
Two or three minutes, okay.
A question, I think, for Katie to ask somebody, because it's not in your wheelhouse. If a development is being done and it's allowed by right or by special permit, and there is not the capacity for the sewer, can they not put in a Title V septic system which may require denitrification? I don't think we can say you can't build anything. I think there needs to be an alternative...
Not if you put the code in, yeah.
...method of treatment that would need to be addressed. That's not a question we can answer today. I don't expect an answer, but I think that is also very critical.
Okay, and Frank, last question.
Yes, sir. The, Catherine, the, the five units, I'm trying to find that. I saw the eight units in the memo, but I haven't seen the five.
I, I think she just asked that of...
Yeah.
No, but where did the five come from?
I think Rob made a comment that...
We looked at, for the Barn Hill Pump Station, we looked at, we calculated it for eight units, but then we also looked at it for five units just to see like what that threshold would look like.
And just to clarify, his, the board started out a few years ago, considering this, we started out with a baseline dense, baseline density of five units per acre. That's where we started. And then over time, we decided, well, why don't we increase it? Let's see if we can increase it. So, this is over a number of years, we tried to increase, and then we finally pushed it.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand, are, are we close to the line with eight units or five units?
Barn Hill can accommodate both. However, it limits future, any other future growth in that area.
At eight units or five units?
Both.
Both.
Okay.
And George Ryder...
George Ryder could not accept any additional...
Either. Yeah. George Ryder cannot accept five and cannot accept eight. Is this correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so...
So, I, and I want to just clarify your, the, the answer to your point, though. There's more area that goes into these pump stations than just the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So, if we put all our cards in here and we start to impact other areas and limit their ability, I mean, that's a problem, too. I mean, the, the town and, you know, Rob needs to take a look at this holistically. He can't just look at this one West Chatham Neighborhood Center and ignore everything else. Everything else still... Center and ignore everything else. Everything else still contributes.
I was just going to ask, can we see a map? Can we get a map showing the area that contributes to each pump station?
I can, I can provide that and send it to the board.
Just so we have, I'm a visual person.
Yeah. That's a very good, good point. I, I think what I'd like to do right now, we can continue the discussion as we work through the, after the business meeting at 5:00. There needs to be a switchover by the TV crew, so I would like to close this meeting now and then we'll start up again at 5:00 on the, the business meeting. So could I have a motion?
A move. We adjourn the work session.
Second.
Let's have a roll call vote. Catherine, help her.
Yes, I approve.
Warren Jane?
Warren Jane, approve.
Bob Wershafter?
Approve.
Charlene Green?
Approve.
Frank Scheer?
Approve.
Bob Dewis?
Bob Dewis, prove.
And Art Spru, I approve. We'll see you again at 5:00.